Welcome to the Wednesday, October 3 meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. So our first order of business is approval of minutes, and we have minutes from August 29. We had a full house, everyone was here. Any motions? Tough crowd today.
Will the minutes be approved?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a, Maria? So there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Yes. I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Brestrup for such a careful retelling, recounting of my concerns about the letter that I had written and some of the issues that I had raised, and they were very well interpreted, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Abstention? Unanimous. Moving on to number two, planning and zoning, zoning subcommittee report. Rob?
So I guess this is the main event tonight. We're going to, so we've told you last couple meetings that we are, that is, the zoning subcommittee is planning to compile a list of zoning topics, zoning amendments, fixes, planning issues that we would like to present to the town council to help them collect their thoughts and figure out how they want to proceed or what they want to prioritize as far as planning and zoning is going forward. And we want to do that with, you know, we want it to be a planning board report, not a zoning subcommittee report. So we've started, we have listed outstanding zoning issues, issues that we've been working on and where that have come up in recent years. Planning department staff has also been compiling a list of issues. We are, we are, we have a preliminary prioritization of the issues that the zoning subcommittee has come up with in this colored chart, and then there's a list, the list that the staff has put together. Now before I, before we go into that, I want to also make a report about a discussion we had with Carolyn Mish, who is a planner in North Hampton, about how, how North Hampton handles planning and zoning issues. They're obviously a city form of government, so they have, they have a different process than we have had for many years, and we wanted to learn from them about how our process might change, how, how we do zoning amendments might change as a way of informing this report and, and how the planning board works going forward. So it was a very interesting discussion, we learned a lot. I think the planning board in North Hampton does not have a standing zoning subcommittee, and as a result, I think, much of the, of the planning initiative or zoning initiatives come from staff. Staff develops them and brings them either to the planning board or to the council directly in some way, and then, and then ultimately, when it comes to council, the council immediately refers it to the planning board, whether or not it came from the planning board, and then the planning board and a subcommittee of the council holds a public hearing, the mandatory public hearing, before the council itself votes on, on a zoning amendment. Staff, the staff process is, is driven, or the staff is working off of a list or a framework of zoning changes that was developed as a result of their most recent master plan process. So when they, when they wrote their master plan, they immediately established a, an ad hoc committee, including members of the planning board and members of the council and neighborhood stakeholders and, and others to, to develop a list of zoning initiatives suggested by the master plan. And they worked for, I think, two years or something, and they, they made this list. And then, since then, the staff has been, has been working through the list and, and then obviously also reacting to things that have come up over the years, integrating that into, into this plan, into this work list. And so, so when they bring, they don't have to bring proposed zoning amendments at any particular time. They don't, they're not working on a, on a twice-year town meeting cycle, and they have the flexibility to, to massage language as, as, you know, in reaction to, to how council responds to, to a zoning proposal or how the planning board responds to it. So, so they, they bring things basically when they think they are ready, and, but they also, they, they try not to bring something every week, and they, they try to, you know, bring a couple at once so that, so that they can have the council's attention on zoning for, you know, a few articles or a few amendments. So it's, you know, that's, in some ways, that's, that's similar to the way we have been working. We would bring a few articles at a time, but we had to wait, or we had to hurry up and finish at certain deadlines in order to be ready for, for a town meeting. So, so that part is, is different and, and presumably will be different for, for Amherst going forward. So that's sort of a introduction to, to a discussion about, that we might have about how we think we'd like to pursue zoning changes or planning initiatives with council going forward. We don't have, that is, the zoning subcommittee doesn't have a, a specific recommendation about whether we should continue to exist next year. Of course, we don't even know who's, who's going to be on the planning board any year, so, so, you know, this, this, this discussion, you know, may be for not, who knows? So, in any case, in some way, the town will, will have to continue to plan and to make zoning changes to, to fix things that aren't working or to encourage this or that activity. And so we have started developing this report that we're going to present, ideally with your support. So I guess I want to, I want to briefly look at what we have prepared so far. The first one I want to look at is, is this chart. This is a, we realized tonight that this is sort of a big picture view of, of zoning issues in town, and we've divided them into, into five broad categories, and then within those categories, we have assigned three tiers of priority to issues within those categories. This is just our, our first look at it. We would like to hear from you about, you know, whether we've got this generally right, whether we've got the right categories, whether we've got the right tiers, whether we have the right items in each of the boxes. So, so each of these items is, is, you know, many of them are vague. For instance, the first item under downtown town center is form-based code. We do not have a proposal that, that the council might look at, but its appearance on this chart means that a downtown issue that the council should look at is, is developing a form-based code for the downtown in some way, in some process. And there are, and so you can see that we have a number of, of issues under each of the other categories, some of which we think are, are very important and some of which are important but not as important.
Can you just address, is the top, the blue, like, most important?
Yes.
Like, what is the most desired or what, yeah?
Yeah, I guess I would say desired. These are the things that we think are, are the most important things that, that people are most interested in, things that, that are, that would be most helpful for the town to, to work on.
So those two come out, like, desired or less, or important, less important, but also like short-term goal, long-term goal, like?
Yeah, okay, that's a good question. So, so, yeah, so we, I, I don't think that this reflects any idea about timeline, short or long term. There might be some things that are long-term in the blue row, there might be some things that are short-term in the blue row, and so on. That is not something that we have attempted to delineate at all.
So would you put something like a note at the bottom saying that, like, if you were going to give this, present this? It's just, it's the first thing I thought, like, well, what is the parameter of these three, the blue? Or I didn't even know if it was importance, it could have been, I don't know, was there some other genres that you were lumping them into?
So to accompany this, we are also anticipating providing some text, some, a short description of what each of these things mean, why they're important, what might be done. I think, I think that we, at least my, my initial reaction to that suggestion about, about short and long term, or what, what schedule we might do this on, is, is not something that, that we would address, it's, it's something that we would like the council to help us address, or maybe to address for us. Do this, but don't do that. Or, or they might say, you know, do whatever you think is best. They might, they might, they might put it back on our, in our plate, that's, that's, that's fine. We don't know what the process is going to be. This, we're helping, we're helping the council and the town and the planning board figure out what the process should be by providing this report, I think. So in addition to this chart and our text that hasn't been developed yet, the staff has also compiled the list. As we were working tonight, we realized that there are some of these things that are on the staff list, you know, are already on our chart, some things that are on our chart may be more appropriate on a staff, on the staff list. The staff list, we realized, was often concerned with specific issues, details, technical fixes, what used to be called technical fixes. And so, and so we are, we are imagining now that there will be two charts. One, based on this, that is sort of a big picture view, and a second chart similar to this that has specific items, smaller items, detail-oriented items that, that can be worked through by staff or by, or by a zoning subcommittee if it exists, and, and just, just churned through in some priority. You know, maybe we would prioritize, we would categorize this list and then also prioritize it similar to this. We realized when we did this that, that some of the things that are on this list were, particularly things that we had on, in the green row here, were, were things that, that were, were important because they, they addressed a specific issue that has come up. For instance, in the zoning bylaw repair, the fourth row, or the fourth column, the last row, farm-related amendments, farm stands, breweries, events, things that, that, that people want to be able to do on a farm, but, but our zoning bylaw is sort of vague on them, or they can't, it doesn't allow them, or, or whatever. It didn't, it hasn't risen to a priority for the zoning subcommittee in, in so many years, but the staff is hearing from farmers and other people who want to be able to do things. So, so when we did our initial chart, we didn't think it was, we didn't feel that moved by it, but, but if, if people are continually bothering the staff, it probably is something that should be addressed. So, so we are, we are, we have proposed or we have suggested that we move those kinds of items onto a different chart and then, and then prioritize them in some way. And so these two charts can be used together or separately, is our, is our thinking right now. So I guess what we would like now, unless, unless I've left anything out, people should chime in, is, is a, a discussion along the lines that I've been having with Christine about, about some of these things, questions about why we did this, why we did that, what does this mean? You know, we should have that discussion to inform a future revision of either or both of these charts, and to inform our development of, of the text that will accompany this, and eventually maybe the way it is presented to the council. By the way, we are not, we are, we are, we are planning to, or we hoping to have something ready for the council within, you know, the first few months of its, of its business, not right away. We're not aiming for December, we're aiming for something like February, March or something for, for this, but we have no set deadline. So there's no, there's no, you know, pressure.
I'm curious, thank you so much. And I'm curious, because I can never keep track, but who's on a holdover appointment? So we go, the council will go from nine to seven, when the council's seated, so in December. So who, who are the, so I'm on a holdover and you're on a holdover, is anybody else? So there's just the two of us, so the assumption is that we're the two that?
So we can just drop off at the seven who are remaining?
Yeah, we drop off. So everyone else remains until their terms expire, and then they can apply, if so desired, to remain on through whatever process town council develops. So we'll have a lot of continuity institutional. So then the council itself, of course, will be, some people, who knows what that will be, but it could be people that are brand-new to government and the other people that are not brand-new, so there's going to be a mix. But I don't know, I don't know how the cards will fall. So it'll be interesting. And the town council itself can generate or propose zoning bylaw changes that then still have to be vetted by planning board and then back to the town council for a vote, I guess.
Right, that's another, another thing that we learned from the North Hampton planner is that it's not a common occurrence, but sometimes a council member will write their own zoning proposal and present it to council. So that's, that's different from, from what we've had before, where a citizen, we had, we've had petition articles, but it still goes through a process.
We could still have, there still can be citizen.
That's true.
Yeah, interesting. I mean, I think it's a really interesting list, and so I, from coming from the position of the planning boards, kind of know the subtext on most of these, and so I guess the question is how much subtext can you even do to, you know, to explain? So some of these are based on articles that have been proposed and didn't make it, and others are based on sort of new ideas that have come up. Some are actually based up on, it seems like, ideas that even come up during the, you know, sort of the charter question during the, during the last year, you know, during, while the charter question's been in the news. Some of it is by state law marijuana, yep?
I wasn't here for a lot of the background on this, but we basically pulled it from reports from like 2006, 2000, you know, a long time, we pulled a series of staff reports and, yeah, the most recent articles, and it was a huge laundry list, and basically through, I don't know how many, maybe a couple subs, zoning, subcommittee meetings, we started with a chart that was already created similar to this and just, you know, placed them from just discussions and, and just sort of prioritize them by voting, and then we wanted to see if you guys agreed on our prioritization, or if there are missing categories or missing, you know, pieces. But yeah, we basically took over a decade's worth of.
Yeah, that's, that's amazing.
Running on one thing.
It's like the, the yearbook. So one thing that is, I'm trying to see if this one made it on the list, but there's, so if you read the blogs and letters to the editor and bobby-bah, number of occupants for family sizes, I?
It's not on here.
Yeah.
Could be.
It's hard, you know, it's hard to, oh, I'm sorry, Christine, go ahead.
I just have one that I want to ask about. I noticed it's not on the staff list, but on the subcommittee's list, second column, the blue, last one says parking requirements. Parking, you're a dear to my heart. The municipal parking district, I would think, really needs to be looked at. I don't know if you were meaning that or other things, and Chris is here, so what are her thoughts on that? I notice it's not on the staff list.
So I think, I've been hearing a lot about parking lately too, and the municipal parking district was created in the 1960s, and then it was revised somewhere in the 80s, I believe, and then the last revision occurred in 2008, and that was before we really experienced a lot of development in the downtown. And the reason that we established the municipal parking district was to allow development in the downtown, and now we've seen so much that we may want to look at it again and figure out, you know, do we really want to allow these buildings to continue to be built without any onsite parking? And if we do want them to include parking in their plan, how much do we want? And so these are all questions that need to be worked through, but it also applies to parking in other districts. I think the planning board, the planning board has a very good way of negotiating with developers to figure out what the appropriate amount of parking is on various sites in the outlying areas, and I think that the zoning bylaw hasn't necessarily kept up with the planning board's thought process. The zoning bylaw still requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit, and sometimes that just doesn't make sense. Fortunately, there's kind of a, a stopgap at the end of the, of the chapter seven of the zoning bylaw that allows the boards and committees to modify those specific requirements, but it is a step that you have to go through. So just looking at the whole parking issue in general, I think, would be a good idea, but specifically starting with the municipal parking district.
And so some of these are, so the zoning bylaw, like, regarding parking, there's only one, you know, instrument. I mean, we obviously deal with parking, and it's, municipal parking district seems like an obvious target, but centralized parking is such, in other words, maybe the, you know, the concept where there's a parking enterprise fund or whatever, where in lieu of providing onsite parking, you pay into a fund that then goes, you know, goes to a parking garage or whatever it may be, but it seems like it's a multi-pronged thing. The municipal parking district makes so much sense in many ways if you're trying to create a, you know, livable, walkable downtown, because the idea of all of that ground area being used for parking is, you know, I completely know what the complaints or the concerns about the parking are, but that would be, yeah.
So may I say two things about that? One is that we have had the experience recently of someone coming forth with a plan for development, and this was for the northern part of downtown.
Yeah.
It hasn't really come before you in a formal way, but they did take the opportunity to move the building towards the front and provide parking towards the rear, and their ratio is about one, a little bit more than one parking space per dwelling unit. So that may be a direction that developers, you know, are thinking of moving in, but that could also be kind of a clue to how to deal with the municipal parking district if you did want to require parking, that if the lot is big enough, people can provide parking to the rear of the site, and maybe they can provide some underground parking in some situations. So there may be a way of encouraging developers to provide some parking, not two parking spaces per dwelling unit, but just some parking. But the other thing I wanted to say is that the downtown parking working group is now developing, well, they have developed an RFP for hiring a consultant, and they're currently interviewing candidates for that position to help them to figure out parking in the downtown area. To follow up on Nelson Nygaard's report of a couple of years ago, Nelson Nygaard really only did part one of a three-part series of, of parking studies that were recommended by the parking report. They gathered the data about what exists in town, what exists as far as town-owned parking and what exists as far as privately-owned parking, but didn't really, it wasn't part of their, her, their scope of work to put together a series of recommendations about what to do with that data. So now the municipal, now the downtown parking working group is, is hoping to get somebody on board who can really help them to analyze what was, what was, what the data that Nelson Nygaard gathered says, and then what to do with it. And one of those steps may be to try to work with private parking, private property owners to try to see if the town can work in concert with them to manage their parking, perhaps making some of it available to the public. And perhaps Ms. Christine Gray-Mullen could say more about that, but I don't know.
We could go down the parking rabbit hole very easily here, but I agree, Chris, everything you said is great, and, and like she said, we're in the interview process, so hopefully we'll have a consultant on board in about a month, and as this list, these lists are very long, the, just the parking lists are also very long. So I just want to say that I'm glad to see that it's on the, on the subcommittee's list in the blue. Maybe add the actual MPD, like, you know, that that has to be looked at.
Yeah, that's.
But I'd, I'd also like parking mentioned under the blue and the Village Center, because I do think, right now, we've been very focused just on downtown parking, but I think as North Amherst and that area builds out, that parking will actually become an issue because you're going to have more nighttime restaurants and people living there, and there's people already living there. So it, right, it's not just the, the municipal parking district in downtown, we probably do have to look at this holistically all over town.
So our students are doing a lot of, my students are doing a lot of research on the downtown right now, because we're working on a downtown mixed-use building, rip from today's headlines. And actually, one of the groups did this, you know, basically history of East Pleasant from zero, as far back as they could find to maybe 1950 or something like that. It was fascinating what they found. So the land use at 1912, most of the land use in the downtown, behind the buildings in the downtown area, all the way down to Kendrick Place, was dedicated to horses. So it was liveries and blacksmith shops and all kinds of horse-related functions. So there was a blacksmith shop, they, they found a photo of it. So what's remarkable is that this is the world, the age of photography, where photography was relatively common. So they found a, a photo of the blacksmith shop, that's where Kendrick Place is now. So that was the equivalent of car. So that was the equivalent of cars, you know, just 100 years ago, where all of these, this horse. And so all of that has either been turned down or turned into coffee shops? And then, of course, the next wave were automobiles, right? So then, then the horses all went away, and then the, actually, the downtown area became sort of dominated by automobile-related functions. The motel that was there was an auto motel that you would find out on the highway somewhere, car dealership right next to it, you know, the Bertucci's. So that was what our best vision was in the, you know, the 1950s. And actually, there was a proposal they found from 1990 that was for, again, it's all the history of the Kendrick Place. So this is for like an ice cream shop with like 10 parking, like a little, you-
Creamy.
Some of you, wait, who said that?
A creamy.
A creamy, yeah. So that was, really interesting, that there, you know, half a lot was used for parking, and it was a little one-story building, because that's the only capacity they have. So now we're 50 years beyond that, and we have all this experience with how automobile-focused businesses have problems, how horse-focused businesses have problems. So now we're in the, we're in a different world and sort of projecting ahead to what the next world is, I think, is really critical. And I have no idea what it is. Jetpacks.
I have one of them. Drop-off, pickup zones for shared ride.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyway, I think that the list, to me, it looks great, and we're responsive to some of the petition articles, like the septic system, hydrology.
I'm wondering what would be, what would be most helpful to the zoning subcommittee if we were to go through this on a point-by-point basis and question or affirm placement, or whether you want to not get into that kind of micromanagement at this point. I have some questions about where I would think priorities ought to be. I also have some questions about what exactly certain things mean, and I don't know how to proceed about this. What is your preference?
Go for it. What's my preference? Just, do you want to just-
Okay. Let's look at the housing column to begin with. I don't quite know what FAR as an alternative to units per acre is. Could you explain that to me so I can have a sense of what we're talking about?
Floor area ratio, so it's how much building you can have as a, as a percentage of the amount of lot area you have, so moving to that, away from a units-per-acre method of regulation was one of the recommendations in the housing section of the master plan.
The other question I have in that column is, what exactly is the definition of a pocket neighborhood?
So this is something that, that the zoning subcommittee talked about maybe five years ago. We were talking about small houses on small lots and pocket neighborhoods at the same time. Pocket neighborhood, I think the concept that we were thinking of was multiple houses, multiple individual houses on one lot or a few lots. Not, so, so they were sharing a lot, sharing a lot with a, a single driveway or parking area or something, but, but, but individual homes.
Individual ownership of two small lots as opposed to a supplemental dwelling?
It could be two, but I think we were thinking that poss, you know, possibly there might be multiple, you know, six, seven, eight houses.
How is that different from a cluster development?
A cluster development relies on size. You can have so many per acre.
Right.
A pocket neighborhood, we didn't, we didn't get very far with this. So I, so I may not have a definitive answer for you, but I would, I would say that, that for a pocket neighborhood, we were thinking of whatever size made sense for the, for the house, and however many you could fit on whatever size that was. I guess more of a-
Can you imagine this is a kind of more dense neighborhood-
Yes.
-than a typical cluster development, which is, which is suburban?
Yes.
Okay. So it's infill in a sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that's sort of connected with small houses on small lots.
Yes.
So they're really the same kind of issue.
Yeah.
Okay. I personally, I think that along with townhouses in more zones and supplemental detached dwellings are all connected in a way which puts, ought to put them up in the blue as opposed to in the orange. Because I think if you could, if we could somehow make some kind of package of all that stuff together, I think that would be a huge step ahead for us. I don't suggest that anything that's already in the blue in housing should be, should be pushed down at all, but I do think, you know, maybe that's even connected with the 40R district. I don't know. That seems like a stretch, but that's sort of where I come from on this, on the housing lot, housing column.
Interesting.
I think it's actually very connected to 40R potentially.
Okay. Well, then lump them all together, and if you can find a way to have one title and three subsets or something like that, maybe it would be a way to present it, at least call attention to the council about what the big issue is and how there are little pieces of the big issue which could be addressed either collectively or independently.
It's, I don't, I think it's a low priority, but do we have zoning on tiny houses? And is that under one of these or a separate thing?
You mean microhouses?
No, tiny houses where it's technically on wheels, right? It's, but, yeah.
Well, I was going to say to Michael's comments earlier that I agree that lumping several of these together certainly makes sense. I think there's a certain component to this of our being accustomed to a way of working where we've been bringing forth, you know, legislation of a certain scope because of the nature of the legislative body under which we are working. And I think having found challenges bringing very large, comprehensive packages. And so there's, I think that's one reason these are broken up into some of the ways they are, and also the fact that several of these, like pocket neighborhoods, small houses, getting to Christine's point in a second, are in there because not only have they been priorities in previous reports, but we actually have drafts for some of these items, pocket neighborhoods, small houses and small lots. And to tiny houses' point, Christine, you know, we have provisions in the zoning bylaw that speak to how long a mobile home can, essentially that's what tiny houses are when you put them on wheels. And that's how a lot of municipalities have got, have regulated them and how people have chosen to structure them so they fit somewhere into the zoning, because, and you would know, or maybe Steve would know more about this than I, but a building code has minimum square footages for occupiable spaces.
Hundred square feet per person for residence.
Yeah. So, so that's one issue. And so the closest I think we've come to new tiny house regulations would be the supplemental detached dwellings, which, again, I'm not sure what square footage you're talking about. I hear tiny house, I think like 150 to 300 maybe square feet.
Hundred square feet.
Which is quite a bit smaller than what we've discussed in past as far as the supplemental dwellings.
What, what do we say about mobile homes in the zoning bylaw?
Six months, I think.
You can have one for six months if you're replacing a home that you are, that burned down or something like that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, mobile homes are not allowed. But there are a couple of them around town that are kind of grandfathered. There's one on Belcher Town Road, I think, where an elderly family lives, and they've lived there forever. But once those people move out, I believe that mobile home has to disappear.
But there's definitely tiny houses around also, not that, I'm asking for a friend.
Well, the building commissioner has said, I believe he says, that if a tiny house is connected to the ground and it's connected to utilities, then it's a legitimate house. And he doesn't really have much of an opinion on how big it needs to be, although there are health codes about how big bedrooms need to be and that kind of thing. But it's really the issue of tying it to the ground, making it permanent, and hooking it up to utilities that seems to be the point of contention, because many people who have tiny houses don't want to be tied down to the ground. But that makes them, you know, subject to being, to freezing and having their water pipes freeze, et cetera.
I just went to a tiny house convention in Vermont, and they're allowed in Vermont, but I think Massachusetts, actually, the building code does not allow them.
The whole state?
Yeah.
The state building code.
So there's actually something larger than the town of Amherst that needs to change in order for it to become allowable.
Interesting.
Yeah. But Vermont has allowed that because, you know, it's Vermont. They, yeah, they're, they're big proponents of the tiny house movement and-
Yeah, yeah.
There are a lot of them. It's not Massachusetts yet.
So what action, if any, from us?
I think just be aware that this is a work in progress. Even the, the documents you have in front of you don't represent the most up-to-date, because there was discussion at the zoning subcommittee tonight, as Rob mentioned, about reconfiguring it. So just know that right now, our, our goal is to get something out around February and to keep refining this and building on it.
So one of my particular interests, and I have, you know, obviously many on this list, is the zoning bylaw repair, expand use of graphics. So Paria and I went to a lecture where someone was from Buffalo, who's an architect, was talking about taking the Buffalo zoning code, which was incredibly complex, and doing this beautiful graphic. So it involves some changes to the zones, but basically, like, there was a residential section, and then there was a business section, and, and there, basically the zones were nested. So, you know, they had the least restrictive, and then the next restrictive, and then the next restrictive, but it, so she showed us that, and we have to get a copy of it. But it seemed like sort of a really great way of showing a big idea, and it's complicated in Amherst because it's not exactly like that. In other words, we don't exactly get, you know, the bigger the lots get, the more, more or less restrictive, I guess. But I have been curious as to whether or not there's a way that we can approach this, because it's, conceptually, our zoning bylaw, which I've grown to love, is absolutely not compre, it's not conceptually comprehensive to someone who's not an insider, so. But I would, you know, love to be involved in that one, maybe as a past member of the planning board.
Does the, does the Buffalo code, is the entire zoning code illustrated in this way?
You know, I don't know, because she was showing us, it was part of a lecture, so she was showing us the highlight reel, so it might be just a, you know, just a section that she had been working on. But it was, it was sort of fascinating.
Yeah, I would think that would be a very useful way to approach it, particularly from the point of view of the layman who's trying to figure out what, what he or she can do, and maybe even a developer, to some extent, although developers tend to be much more aware of the details than we are in some cases.
I don't remember, but I think we were talking about in the sense of, have you seen Northampton's diagrams about just simple things, about like setbacks and driveways?
Yeah.
I think that's what we were referring to as far as graphics. But you're talking more like zoning zone, like-
Yeah, just kind of rethinking the transition from the various, like, we know that if you go from BG to BL, for example, some things become less restrictive, other things become more restrictive, and it's counterintuitive what happens as we change from, you know, one similar kind of a zone to another similar kind of a zone.
Interesting.
Well done. Thank you.
Can I make a couple more points here? I thought we were going to go through this sort of column by column.
Okay.
In the downtown town center column, is there any particular reason why the landscape issue has surfaced up to the blue? It seems to me that would be a less important issue.
I think we were considering the downtown issues as a group, and a lot or all of these really interact with each other, and so we prioritize them as a group rather than breaking one out, especially form-based code, for instance, could encompass pretty much everything on that list. So I think we just kept them together for that reason, that we see it as something that needs to be tackled in a comprehensive way.
Well, my sense is that the same thing would be the case with the items that I put together suggested in the first column, that the comprehensiveness should be equally important in the first column as in the second column. I take your point that they are separable and that there are already proposals on, on the table in one way or another for some of those issues. But if we can present them to the council as part of an important, large-scale issue, I think it may be more politically astute than to try to nitpick our way through them individually. We can see there's a plan to get through three or four of these things in four years or whatever it takes, but there's all, it's all one thing as opposed to piecemeal here or there. I think the same thing, your point about the downtown town center is well-taken, but I think both of those categories ought to have the same kind of approach.
Do you want to keep going? North Amherst, do you want to go to Village Centers? East Amherst, scanning, East Amherst is near where the Florence Savings Bank is, I'm sorry, Florence Bank is, okay.
We're going to see a lot of, we are potentially going to see some development there. I don't know how much, but there's at least one project that's been proposed on Southeast Street with you all are familiar with, and I suspect when that gets going that more things will follow. It's Amir McCheeze.
Yeah, 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 we saw the preliminary for that.
And, you know, that's, that's going through the Conservation Commission right now, and I suspect you're going to see it soon after it gets through CONCOM.
So it could happen in this?
It could happen soon, yeah.
Okay.
And so that'll be a big change to that, that neighborhood.
Huh. What happens if we go from nine to seven during the, I guess we'll cross separate when we get to?
There, there are also potentially a lot of changes happening in North Amherst, because, you know, Kohl's Lumber is, is energetically marketing their, their land up there, and if we get our Mass Works grant, we will be realigning the intersection there. And the Beacon Project is going up quickly, and will be done by, I believe their goal is to have it ready for next fall. So things are really moving fast there, and so there should be some attention paid to North Amherst. We did pay a lot of attention to it in the past when we were determining how we wanted the roadway to be realigned, but since then, it's kind of fallen off the radar to some degree.
How much, we talked about the zoning bylaw repair now?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I'm sorry, jumped around, yeah.
How much interest has there been in the whole farm stand, agricultural use idea category, area? Yeah.
There's a lot of interest in it. We get people coming in fairly frequently who own farmland to try to figure out what they can do on their property, and to some degree, they're limited by the APR program, but often they're not, and they want to grow grapes and have wineries and wine tastings, and they want to grow things that are put into beer, which I'm not really familiar with, and have, potentially have beer tastings and be able to sell beer from their property and other types of things like that. So they're more, more than just sort of the typical farm stand. They also have talked about, you know, farm stand restaurants, which we do actually- really going to need to be more flexible about the kinds of activities that can go on there. So we hear a lot about that. There are certainly, there are even people who, they want to have, be able to have weddings, they want to have sort of venues on the farm, use the barns that they have and, you know, be able to offer them for weddings or other kinds of celebrations, art displays, and many different types of things that don't quite fit into the bylaw right now.
Are they prohibited by the bylaw at this point? Or are they just not covered?
They're not covered.
Does that mean they're prohibited functionally?
If they're not in the bylaw, well, if the building commissioner can find something that's pretty similar, you know, he'll put it into that category. But most of the time, those things aren't allowed. And, you know, if they're not controlled in some way, they could really get out of hand, you know, in terms of music, hours of operation, amount of parking, lighting, all of those things. But if you have it specifically outlined in the bylaw that this type of activity is allowed, then you can start to control it, and the planning board can review a plan to allow a farm to be used as a venue, and, you know, so it works in the benefit of the farmer, but it also works to the benefit of the town, I think.
So if I wanted to have a wedding in the barn of my property, I couldn't do that without a permit?
Well, if, do you mind if I answer?
Oh, no, please.
Okay, so if it's your family that's having the wedding, that's fine, no problem. But if you wanted to rent it out to someone else, and that person was going to bring in caterers and 100 people, you know, then that wouldn't be allowed.
The wedding could be annulled by the building commission.
But just, like, a one-time thing would be hard to regulate. I think what you're saying is someone wants to do this as many weekends as they possibly can rent it.
That's it, yeah.
Well, then I think we definitely should figure out a way to make those things possible, or if we want to.
It just, like, in the, I mean, it just, so especially across the river, a lot of farms are being, you see these kind of wedding operations happening, and it's a way of helping the farms stay open, frankly.
Then maybe that, that ought to move out of the green, at least into the orange.
We're going to, we're going to all go back to two colors if you, maybe even one color.
Now, we still have green.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, it's, it sounds like, it sounds like it is a, an issue that is interesting to enough people that we should do it, and not terribly complicated, so that we should do it. I could be wrong about both of those, but...
Right, so, so we actually came to a similar conclusion, and in a future version of this, the farm things will not be on this, they'll be on, on the other chart, the chart of, so. And then, and then, so then, at that point, it might be on the top row of that chart.
The, the short-term, long-term.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else?
Did I miss, I think I noticed in the, in the two-page white document, I can't find it right now, something about reviewing the master plan. Was that in there?
Yeah.
Master plan up at the very top. And that's not on the, on the, on the color chart, is it?
Not yet, but it will be on the next verse.
It should be, though, yes.
Yeah, but in a weird way, it's not a zoning, so these are more zoning bylaw issues, and the master plan is the...
Yeah. Well, it's the planning board's responsibility.
It is, yeah.
But lots of things are, in our jurisdiction that we're not putting.
Yeah.
We're just, this is the zoning subcommittee.
Yeah. Okay, so this is not, this is not simply another format of this.
This is the planning departments list.
Okay.
So it's just there.
And sometimes they merge, sometimes they don't. Yeah.
We're going to try to get them together.
The merge.
I was going to suggest we move on to see if there's any public comment or not. Are you just here watching?
Well, I've been sitting in on the subcommittee.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Kathy Shane.
Yeah, yeah.
Kathy Shane, I'm from up in North Amherst, where you're talking about driveways. I've been sitting in on the earlier meetings, so I was interested to hear your reaction, both to the color scheme and to the list, because some of that came up earlier on which are the most important and which things go together, and how you think about it as comprehensive pieces, that if you're changing one part, you want to change the other so they're complementary. And looking at the long list, the white piece of paper, which are more major, that are missing from the color sheet. So trying to get the bigger ideas there, and then you can go into the finer points. So, for example, on housing inclusionary, expanding that zoning is a list at the very bottom, other things on the white. But, you know, if that would be considered, then it's going to affect a lot of the other pieces as they're moving. So I think of them as moving parts of a puzzle that is thought of in form-based zoning in another way. So I was coming to hear your reaction to the list that I've been looking at for the last couple of meetings, and it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we move on? Other? Move on to old business, topics not reasonably anticipated?
No topics.
New business topics that reasonably anticipated? Form A's A and R? Oh, sorry.
Trivia B.
Trivia B? Take your weapons. So trivia B is on October 25th, which is a Thursday. Who was the team last year? We did not bring home much, sorry. So who's in?
I can't make this one.
You can't make this one. So I'd be happy to do it, but I bring, I'm bringing down the team.
Don't look at me.
Yeah?
What is this?
Oh, yeah.
Well, as a news member...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's the, that's the entry level to being, yeah, whenever, whenever anyone doesn't say no, they immediately get recruited.
Well, I'm sorry. But I, I'm not subscribing to that theory, but, but what is this?
The, it's the annual Amherst Education Foundation Trivia B. It's a fundraiser for the AEF, and we filled in a team probably for eight, 10 years, you know, something like that. So we actually bring home, we brought home, brought home the bacon. We won 10 years ago, or nine years ago, or something.
It's been downhill since then?
It's been downhill since then.
The glory days are over.
Yeah, so we need a team of four.
We came close to getting it filed, didn't we?
We came close.
The year before, we got wiped out.
Yeah. So one, yes?
I, I could, what, it's like eight o'clock?
Seven thirty, I think. Seven thirty...
October 25th?
Yeah.
It's a lot of fun.
It is fun.
I knew all the eighties trivia.
Yeah, now we have a good range of experiences here.
You had the geography.
Oh, I meant, yeah, geography, I meant, yeah. I can only, I can only do geography and zoning bylaw.
That's about half the questions. I can't do it.
You can't do it, okay.
I have something, but find out if Jack or Pari want to do it.
Okay.
How many do you need?
We need four.
You really have a handicap, and you don't have four because...
Yeah.
I would consider it, yeah.
I think I'd say yes. We have our team. We have our team. It's great, it's great to kind of humanize the planning board, for example. I don't think we need to be humanized, but...
I think Mr. Levinstein was still checking his calendar.
No, I've got, there's a, there's a show I've been wanting to see for a while.
So we got Chris, Maria, and Steve? Excellent.
You'd study beforehand?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The only way to study is to get, you hope you're in the third round, and so the themes for each of the questions is the same. So, like, if there's a Star Wars question for someone, there's going to be a Star Wars question for everybody else. So, and even that doesn't make it really easy to, like, there's always like a Beatles question, a Star Wars question. It's, yeah. You guys sure you want me, because it's just not my world. I don't know anything about music.
I got that.
Okay.
Useless information.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll send the names and then. Form A, A and R?
Form A's, nope.
Upcoming CBA?
I don't know of any.
Upcoming SPP, SPR?
Yes, I do know that the building at 236 North Pleasant Street is coming back to you. Its permits are expiring because it's been two years since it was approved, so you will be asked to approve a new side plan review application. And I think the special permit for, let's see, it was for height and for setback, I believe, those two things would be renewed. The special permit is going to be requested to be renewed. So that should be coming, I think, pretty soon, but it hasn't come yet.
That's the Barry Roberts.
Barry Roberts and Good Shamway Building, yeah, right.
Interesting.
It's the only one I know, oh, other than Amir's project, that, that's probably coming soon, too.
Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports, PVPC, anything?
There's a meeting next Thursday.
So CPAC is vacant. Did Pari resign there?
I asked Pari if she wanted to continue because the town manager had asked me to find out about that, and Pari said she's got too many other things going on, so she's not able to do that. So that position is vacant.
So this is going to be hard to have all these committees in a committee of, a planning board of seven, but Agriculture Commission has not met.
So, excuse me?
Yeah.
You would be called upon to make a nomination to the CPAC?
I guess we should do that now. I was hoping to skip right by that.
When do they meet?
I don't know.
And so this isn't subject to the charter restrictions, that no new positions can be filled?
Apparently they're down to, they are down to two members. So they need, I don't know how many they need, but they need more than two.
Anyone interested?
Depends on when they meet or when they do the...
I can find out. If, oh, okay, so...
Okay, so that means, yes, you're interested, or?
Maybe, depending on how often they meet or where they want.
I would also be interested, depending on when they meet.
And so just the question would be, do you have to be a sitting planning board member to, is this one where you have to be a sitting?
I think they require, they require a member from the planning board, yeah.
So that would be, yeah, okay. Agriculture Commission has not met. Design Review Board?
Nothing to report.
So there was an email exchange, that I was part of one email, about meeting with the Design Review Board. Did that, yeah?
So what happened with that was that the Design Review Board was not able to meet tonight. I had hoped to have that joint meeting tonight because I thought it would overlap well with the zoning issues topic, but they weren't able to gather their, their forces.
Two of the members that were out of town.
Okay. Can we poss, would, can we possibly schedule that for the next time we meet?
That was the hope.
Yeah, okay, so the 17th?
Yes.
Municipal Affordable Housing Trust?
Hasn't met, will meet next Thursday.
And zoning subcommittee, we heard that. Then UTAC?
Also hasn't met, haven't heard anything.
So, and of course, and the newspapers were, and this is sort of related, I guess, is the announcement that UMass is moving closer to a 3P, private-public partnership building on, near the visitor's center at UMass. So do you know much about that?
Yes, I know that they're proposing, I believe it's 1,000 beds of development in the parking lots that are near Roadsham Visitor Center. Don't know how tall the buildings are going to be or what they're, I think they're planning on incorporating some sort of parking structure in there, but, because they're, they're losing parking spaces. But I don't really know what the format exactly will be. And, and we've had questions about their, you know, encouraging them strongly to interact with the town, to explain what it is they're proposing to do, and also give the townspeople a chance to comment, you know, give some input as things go on, because really, we don't have any control over their property. It's all in the ED zoning district. So anything that's not within 50 feet of the zoning border is not really covered by zoning.
There was some discussion about this same topic much earlier in the UTAC housing subcommittee process, and a question arose, and I think maybe the building commissioner brought it, which was if something on that site or a similar site were developed as a P3 and a substantial, to be defined, component of it was not directly related to the educational use, that it might be required to comply in some manner with town zoning? Does, does that ring a bell, or has there been any discussion about that?
So we had had that discussion early on when we first learned that the university was interested in P3s, and we did get advice from Town Council, from Joel Bard, that it really wasn't, what should I say? I'm not exactly sure what word to use, but it wasn't going to be useful for the town to endeavor to control what UMass does in the ED zone, because they're a state institution, and even if something isn't, you know, clearly indirectly part of their educational mission, it would be, it would be perceived as being part of their educational mission, because it would support their educational mission. So it's hard to separate those two, even if something is developed by a private entity. So Joel Bard really dissuaded us from trying to control what happens over there.
Interesting. Oh, hi.
I just want to say, so you were talking about by the visitor's center, but I think the article also said that North Village is, so that 1,000-bed, I don't know how, you know, I don't know how they're doing it, but...
So North Village is going to be redeveloped, or they're proposing to redevelop it, but they're not proposing to expand it, they're just wanting to rebuild it. It's housing for, I think it's married grad students with families, or married grad students in general. And the buildings are getting very old and, you know, kind of needing a lot of repair, so they're going to do it one by one, or in phases, they're not going to, you know, take them all out at once. But in phases, they're going to replace those buildings with new buildings. And so that it's going to be a one-to-one match.
Wow. Anything else? Downtown Parking Working Group?
No, more than what was said earlier.
Report to the Chair, the Annual Planning Board Bike Ride, we talked about, I think, before we went into session this year, it was Rob and me on the beautiful break on the rainy day last week. And we had talked about a planning board, you know, the Annual Planning Board Dinner or Potluck, summer potluck, summer has slipped away. So I think it would be a great idea. I can't do it until November, but maybe November, when we're in this time of transition anyway, would be a good time to, you know, to get together. So let's think about sometime after, say, November, the second week of November, you know, something like that. I'll get back to you on that. Oh, and one more thing, is everyone should check out, we have a new exhibit in the design building, and I know a number of you went to Pari's exhibit that was there. So the newest exhibit was one, it's a variation on one that I saw in New London, Connecticut, about four years ago at the museum there. So it's an architect who grew up in the same town where Mahegan Sun Casino is. His family owns a restaurant in downtown Norwich, and... And I know a number of you went to Pari's exhibit that was there. So, the newest exhibit was one, it's a variation on one that I saw in New London, Connecticut about four years ago at the museum there. So, it's an architect who grew up in the same town where Mahagan Sun Casino is. His family owns a restaurant in downtown Norwich. And they, I'm sorry, the restaurant is right across the street from Mahagan Sun. So, it's still there despite the fact that the casino is developed across the street. And it's his observation of what happens when you put a mega corporation right smack in the middle of a small New England town, and what happens to that town. So, it's sort of fascinating in the studies that he's done, like what happens to all these single-family houses. And it's largely with a focus on Asians. So, the primary audience for these casinos, according to him, is 20% Asians, mostly coming on buses from Boston and New York, but really from all over the Northeast. And many of the workers are also Asian, so oftentimes coming straight from China. So, what happens then is they need housing. And they need to, oftentimes, they don't have cars, they need to walk to work. And so, he's done these really sort of fascinating studies of what happens to like the New England split, you know, split-level ranch burger when you need to house workers that work at the casino very nearby. So, check it out, I'm not going to say anything more. But one can't help look at the images of sort of the Emerald City in the middle of a very low-scale rural area and think, I've seen that somewhere before, I think it's here in Amherst. So, you can't think of the, you know, the university as being this sort of rapidly-growing institution in the middle of a very low scale. And then, all of the concerns about what happens to housing that wasn't really, you know, designed for certain things, sort of being converted for, you know, multiple tenants. And actually, there's other issues about people in this, the casino's been open 20 years. And apparently, in this town, everyone thinks that it should be the casino that's providing housing for its workers. So, there are definitely a lot of parallels. But it's beautifully designed. Open, say, nine to four. And if you come out lunchtime, we can have lunch together, so.
May I say something about that? I went to a conference recently, I think it was last Monday. Anyway, one of the topics was housing. And it was interesting because the person who was presenting was talking about large institutions starting to try to provide housing for their workers. And this is particularly true of hospitals because hospitals have a lot of people who work for them who make fairly low wages. And they can't afford to live in the vicinity, particularly true in the Boston area. But one thing they've run into trouble with is the issue of fair housing. Because if they, because it's hard for them to build this housing and restrict it to their workers. So, that's an interesting aspect of this whole thing. I just thought I'd share that with you.
So, you can't do company towns anymore?
I guess not.
Although Disney's been able to, but maybe Florida has different.
Florida might be.
Maybe that has applied to them.
So, I wanted to know for sure that you wanted to meet on October 17th. There aren't any public hearings that have been advertised for that night. And so, if you wanted to meet with the DRB, that might be a good night to meet with the DRB. Otherwise, your next meeting would be November 7th.
I prefer November 7th and as much, I mean, if the DRB is available. But if we don't have other agenda items.
Can't think of anything right now. There haven't been any A and Rs that have been submitted, so.
So, the 31st, we don't have to meet?
You do not have to meet the 31st.
It's a national holiday, trick or treat. Okay?
Right. And Mr. Schreiber, would you sign these two sets of minutes? One is from August 1st, and I didn't catch you as you left the room that night or whenever that that was approved. So, I have two sets of minutes for you to sign.
So, we're adjourned.